Okay.
All right, it's three o'clock and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order if we can all stand up to go ahead and go over the pledge allegiance.
I live in allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm watching Chelsea go back a little.
I will too.
I wonder why you guys are laughing like. Should we go ahead with the roll call? In attendance, we have Ed, Carol and myself. And in online, we have Supervisor Banks and Supervisor Geppert. I'd like to have a motion for allowing Banks and Geppert to fully participate in the meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I am in favor.
Aye.
All right, approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
I have two. Uh, first one is Judy Peak regarding the dog park from Eagle Point. Reminder, you get three minutes.
Judy Peak, Eagle Point. Um, I'd like to thank Doug for bringing up the dog park at the last meeting. My concerns are, uh, traffic and Doug did mention the noise. The majority of the people I've spoken to in my neighborhood are not in favor of putting the dog park. My concern and really contention is the church. I don't know how the church feels. I've not spoken to the church. I don't go to that church. But for me personally, as a Christian, i- it is just totally inappropriate. And I think it would just be a disgrace to put that dog park by that church. And like I said, I don't know how they feel. Again, you may.
Nobody at the church has said order to me.
I don't know that they know.
I have a meeting with them next week.
With Sean?
Yes. Pastor Reverend, was it pastor?
Pastor. Yeah.
But that is my concern. The church, I think, is very disrespectful for dogs to be in that area by that church. And that's a personal feeling. I don't know how they feel, but I know that Pine Crest also has issues. And I would like to say also that people are coming to the park now. When I came out, just a few minutes ago, there were four older gentlemen out there playing basketball. On the weekends, uh, in the last six to eight months, the traffic there has increased. And it's not been bad traffic. It's been children. It's been young boys, young girls, um, even the volleyball. Someone had set up their own little volleyball outfit out there last weekend. So I would just like to express that those are my feelings and I know the majority of the people in my neighborhood would love to see the park stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. So just, just two things. So I've been visiting twice a week, the location. So I'm actually surprised at how much dogs are already there. It's like, and I sent Chelsea a few pictures. I also am concerned with the parking. So there is residents from the adjacent communities that are not only parking there overnight with the commercial vehicles, they're parking across three to four parking spaces. I think it's the time for us to go ahead and start with the towing. We always talked about it, but if we don't enforce it, then don't create the rules. And we're not talking about one vehicle. We're talking about multiple vehicles every day. So that's a concern for me, having it over there, liability and everything else. And I think just a few weeks ago, they took the gate down again. The metal gate was totally broken. So that's all I have on that.
Yep. Just to reiterate, I do have a meeting with Sean next week to voice that. And then I know um, at the last board meeting, you all directed Prak to take lead on it and work through and take, make some, make observations. And so I know a couple of the members have been doing that. Um, I also, uh, will be going out there, doing the decibel readings like the board requested. So that'll be happening over the next couple of weeks as well.
Did Sean approach us or did we approach him?
I approached him.
Okay. So, well, I, I know at church, usually after church, I get held up for 10 minutes for all the comments of the community. And that one has never come up. So I don't know if it's people don't know or people don't care.
Next Sunday.
And I, I think we also had a good feedback with the board of Pine Crest as well, right? There was a lot of clarification that was done.
There was, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the.
So there, we actually, board, we gained their, their support for it. But I'll, I'll, I guess I'll let Prak bring that in formally when the time comes. Nice. I have one other one. Uh, Joel McCulca from Stony Brook regarding, he's representing the Stony Brook Board regarding legal fees.
Stony Brook President of Stony Brook, yeah, it's Joel McCulca from Stony Brook that's President of the HOA. I have a question. I know we had a discussion recently with Tony at, standing up here, about benefit of, uh, when certain things are done and whether or not our legal fee should be paid in part or in full by the O O four fund, which is Stony Brook money that was put in there. And then I found out recently that, uh, the O O four fund was charged over $3,000 for Tony's time. And if we're talking about who benefits from Tony's time, then it's kind of like, that should be all one money. We don't have any agreement or understanding with Tony to, uh, do work for us. I know he represents Gateway. We are paying our two attorneys, Darren and Katie Burkey. And, um, I'm not sure why it was charged the O O four. I didn't think that was appropriate. Any comments?
Was this a singular invoice?
I think it might've been two.
It was two. So I.
Does it identify?
So that was my question. So I saw the email from Vince and I reached out to Chelsea yesterday because I didn't have visibility of what the invoices were. And then Chelsea, you want to give a?
So I have a draft response to Vince. I'm waiting for one document that he requested from, um, our finance department. But, uh, all of the fees incurred by Tony's time were directly related to Stony Brook items, just like what we have in Pelican. If there are Pelican related, strictly related items, Pelican pays for those. Um, landscape easements he's worked with in the past. So the two invoices in question totaling a little over $3,000 are directly related to Stony Brook issues that have come up over the last couple of months. If it's the road turnover, if it's, um, the cameras at the gatehouse, which we still don't have resolution on. Um, I know he's been working diligently on the AGO. I mean, Tony, you could probably chime in to more of what you've been working on.
Track B fourteen.
Yeah.
So it's solely.
But is he not representing you?
Yeah, I represent the district. Yes.
Yes, exactly. I don't think we should be paying for that. We have somebody representing us.
Okay. The district has an interest. The board had made a determination that it wished to have a process for the HOA to get the road. So, um, District Council represented the district on those steps necessary and it benefits the property in Stony Brook. Track B fourteen is similar to that in my opinion, as well as the letter of indemnification with regards to the paving or sealing, as well as the track B fourteen issue. And so, uh, many years ago, I think I, I set up a separate billing number for Stony Brook and then I got a purchase order, I think, what, two years ago, when Laura and Chelsea started the purchase order process. But those are, yeah, district funds collected within Stony Brook, I think are probably paying for, uh, because they relate to activities solely for Stony Brook. And again, as Chelsea mentioned, the landscape easement signage issue, it's being billed to a separate Pelican Reserve account. Seven, six, eight, nine, point zero, one, eight. I know that off the top of my head as well. And so all those meetings involved that, and, and the meetings involving, the issues with Stone, with Pelican Reserve on the agreements, all those are billed to Pelican Reserve. So, and that's been going on for years.
So I have a draft email to their treasurer who approached and asked the question and they requested a refund. Um, and I mentioned while in the email that he has yet to receive, who's sitting in the audience. Um, he can come to this board, but, uh, it's staff recommendation that Stony Brook residents are the only benefit to Tony's time for those specific matters. And so the O O four fund should be paying for that, not the general fund.
Just Pelican.
Yes, just like Pelican.
It's a policy decision of the board.
Yeah.
It, it really is. And in the past, it hasn't been, always been that way.
So in the event that there is contention or question with regards to the expenses towards where those should be, if it's the O O four, O O one, Vince, the treasurer who sent the email is more than welcome to, or Mr. McCulca, come in front of you and make the request that the funding be reallocated elsewhere. But as a staff recommendation, my suggestion is that it stays within Stony Brook Fund. And there will be additional incurred costs from Tony's time with all of these issues that have come up over the last couple of months.
To the benefit of Gateway. And that sometimes is the issue. And if we're gonna do that, I'm fine. Then everything else should come out of the O O four then too. That's our position. Cause we have been, uh, whittled down on that. And I noticed we mentioned cameras. No money has ever come out of the Gateway to spend on cameras. We've done it from HOA. Now, there's an issue of when the cameras were installed, there were two put in, I think by Lennar in the very beginning, their long gun. And no money was ever paid out. And to make claim to those cameras, I agreed to send the letter and said, fine, go ahead and do it. But it makes no sense to me at all. It really does.
I don't want to get into a back and forth.
I was gonna say, I'm very confused because, well, let's, I, I don't necessarily want to have the back and forth discussion, but regarding the benefit, I mean, what is the benefit for us to take B fourteen? We're just gonna incur costs. So there is, so the benefit is, I mean, that gateway, you guys came to us saying, hey, we, we don't want it. Would you want it? So we didn't approach you guys. And, and I, I actually had some calls from some residents of Stony Brook because they were confused. Yesterday was one day. It was actually a busy day. And I was saddened because the information that they received was that we approached Stony Brook to take B fourteen. And that was not true.
And it was not related to them. That's people talking.
So I, I would like know that, that is just not the case. And I had, I asked Chelsea to tell me the date and the meeting so I can pass it on so they can watch the meeting. So that's one. Same thing with the road. It is in the benefit of Stony Brook residents to take over the road. That's something that's to be initiated by you guys. So it benefits you guys, not us. That's how I'm viewing those two items.
That's interesting because this board is the one that initiated taking the roads years ago. When Tony sent the first letter, it wasn't that utter urging. It came from this board to explore that possibility. So it hasn't always been us that initiated that. In fact, we resisted for years. We're willing to take them now for other reasons and I won't get into that list right now. But nevertheless, it actually was a mutual situation with that. While we're on B fourteen, we have people in our community, some of them are board members, that do not want to spend any more money on B fourteen. There actually is going to be a discussion at our next board meeting to just sell the property. We're gonna look into that. Because then if you don't want it, we'll sell it. And if, when that word got out, we've had a couple of contacts. People might be interested. So that's a possibility too.
So I will respond to, uh, the request that I received, I believe, yesterday. And, um, we can go from there.
Okay. One more thing I do want to bring out. I'm here and I know I'm past three minutes. Real quick.
And I did pause it for the back and forth.
Okay, I appreciate it. The insurance money. I know their treasurer's telling me that we still have not seen one nickel from the insurance money for the signs.
So that's exactly what she meant. If she heard what she said, that was her first statement that she's working, that she's waiting for the finance department to give her that information. So she can add that to the draft email that she already has ready to go.
And to show it. And, cause we're looking forward to show up in the O O four, seven thousand dollars. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
So local achievements and recognitions?
Yes.
I think we have one, right?
Um, I, I actually have a lot. Um, I want to mention that we have received probably five or six different email correspondence from um, residents throughout all of Gateway, if it's in the greater Gateway area, or if it's in the Pelican Gateway, um, area about Vicki um, and her customer service. Um, I've also received two or three about our utility field staff and how, um, just truthfully how rock stars they are and how they, they, we've got some new employees and how they're coaching and teaching. Um, and you know, interacting with the residents. So I really, high kudos to all of our staff, but mainly those that have been called out over the last probably month. I've probably gotten eight different emails. So.
That's nice.
That is, that is very nice. I'd like to see, you know, other departments taking the same. What are they doing on utilities that can flow into public works and everything else? Because it is the same names, consistent and add on the new people into it. So it's not like we're switching. So that's really, really nice. So.
Public Works didn't have a staff until that.
Yeah. Now that there's actually people. Well, let's start them on the right, you know, but okay.
And I would like to thank Chelsea and Laura and Randy, who came to Pelican on Tuesday and gave about a one hour, uh, presentation to a group of people that had assembled in the theater, basically saying, this is what G S C D D is, and this is why it's important to you. So, thank you very much, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So.
Yeah, Carol, Carol, I second, I second that also for the presentation Tuesday was excellent.
Thank you, Bob.
Do you have any items to report for any committees?
Okay.
I just want to make mention that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has a night meeting next, Tuesday.
The sixth. The sixth.
The sixth.
That is sixth. Sixth, that's sixth. Um, we ordered a big map for, uh, like that.
Very nice.
For the, thank you, um, with the conceptual drawing that you all approved for the, um, Commons Park parcel. We sent out notifications and asked for people to RSVP. Um, I expect this to be a full room. Um, we want feedback. We want input. Um, we're, we plan on pushing out the survey that the Parks and Rec Committee has been working on. It's a small 10-question survey. Um, and we plan on hopefully pushing that out that night as well.
Uh, a quick question. I was still planning to have the, the code out by the soccer field and the pool. So when people visited the pool, they can just scan the code and do the survey. Cause then it's tied to one time only.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that.
I think that's a, a good investment, just two locations, soccer field, because we have a lot of people going there and then the pool.
Yep.
You know, because of the soccer field, the people from the bocce can use it, the people from the dog park can use it.
We can get a couple of banners.
So, two.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead with approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the January fourth workshop and regular meeting in a second. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items?
I'll move on consent agenda items, A and B. I had no questions on either.
I need a second. No, a second for discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So we have a second for discussion.
The, uh, issue with the contractor has, uh, Cross Creek identified a pond, I think it's one seventeen in the middle of, uh, Callaway Greens. It's that circular pond. There is a red, it's almost looks like what you see at the beach when it's red tide. And it's on around the, almost like a ring around the bathtub deal. And people over there are a little concerned about it. I'd not heard anything about it until residents start calling. And I would have thought Cross Creek would have said if something is awry, they would have contacted us on that. Have we heard anything?
I have not, but I have followed up with staff and find out.
Simple. I think next week, yeah, Monday.
Red, red is not a color I would want to see around one of our legs.
Simple day. So there you go.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. So then we have a motion in a second. I'm in favor.
Aye.
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 And we have nothing for district engineer, admin agenda items. Chelsea?
Uh, yes, Stephen Blum is not on the call, but I will take the lead on this if you want to go to that item. Eleven. Okay. So as we were reviewing the utility bonds and the projects that, um, the capital projects that either are in need of funding or are in the capital, current capital plan, or we see in the next three to five years, or that we've spent money on, um, we want, we were looking at, do we use a bond which is tied to interest, which we all know is pretty high right now? Um, or do we look at S R F funds? Do we look at self-financing depending on what it is? Um, ultimately, I just wanted your kind of consensus on, um, the funding source right now, because we're working on the S R F financing for the water meter project. And I, and I'll go one by one through these projects. And if you kind of just nod your head and say you're in agreement with the funding source, we're good. So the Griffin Roundabout improvements, those were self-funded and we actually had to pull all of that money out of reserves. Um, my predecessor did not contemplate the funding source for that roundabout. So that is a large chunk of change that were depleted from, from reserves. Now there, there, there is the opportunity to pursue, um, the bonds and make that and, and replenish the reserves. Uh, but again, you're paying interest on top of something you've essentially already paid money for. So, um, there's an option to pursue the bond to replenish your reserves, or, um, we just eat it and keep moving on.
If it's been paid for, booked and done, I don't see any sense of going back and doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree.
If you guys are good with that, then we'll just leave it as is. Uh, the utility storage building that's been self-funded, it was put in this year's, um, financing. Again, uh, we haven't written the check, but there's the opportunity, but it's only half a million dollars. Do you want to pursue and get interest, higher interest rates for a half a million dollars?
I, I don't see a need to do it.
Okay. Um, the, obviously the meter replacement program, the water, the water meter, you all decided at your last meeting, that's S R F. So we're gonna pursue that. The twelve inch FPL easement property bypass force main, this is, um, both this one and the irrigation twelve inch irrigation main um, are really tied into one project. We did pursue. Stephen is on.
Yep.
Um, we did pursue H M G P grant funding, which is typically a 25% match required. Uh, that is in the review process right now. So if we're successful with that, we'll have to match.
What's H M G?
Hazard mitigation grant program, which is post-disaster grant funding that becomes available from federal, federal administration, federal government. So.
Is it a grant or a low interest loan?
It's a grant.
It is a grant.
Which our match would be 25%. Um, it would be my intent to use the connection fees that we have for the 25% match. Um, and again, these are all just planning, you know, thinking forward, future budgets around the corner.
What kind of, uh, fund do we have in connection fees?
Oh.
Dollar wise.
Stephen, where are we at with connection fees? Right under two million?
Yes.
For utilities?
I'm pulling it up right now just to double check it for this. It's like two and a quarter.
So if we would receive the grant, we would need about a million bucks.
Yeah. And I believe, I know we have that. I know we have that much. But my question is it one million or two million that we have? So, the next one is the Lower Hawthorne well. We've already pursued S R F funding with that. Um, twelve inch irrigation main, we just talked about that with H M G P and connection fees. This next project is contingent upon the twelve inch irrigation main system. And again, this project was before I started here. I don't know if it's even needed right now, but I kept it on the books, uh, because it was there. This one could be either grant funding, which my thought would be the F D E P one, Ed, that you guys were, um, contemplated applying for. That would be another grant funded opportunity.
Well, the issue on this one, uh, in, on need is that at the summertime, when we're getting rain events, which we're doing now, but, uh, in the summertime, it's a real issue because we have typically dumped water on the roads.
Yeah.
And it's, it's ridiculous.
So I, I know that was the intent, but, um, until that twelve inch irrigation main gets in, um, of course, we're designing, um, oh, I'm drawing a blank right now. We're designing that with taps to accommodate a spray irrigation field. Um, but that spray irrigation system is, as of right now, unfunded. Uh, but it would be the intent to do grant funding.
So what your thought is then, the twelve inch irrigation main, which is going north to supplement pressure, you're gonna tap it as an alternative way to relieve excess water?
Yes.
Not a bad idea.
Stephen said, we have 2.55 million in our, in connection fees.
Which are, which are restricted funds that are for new construction, correct, Stephen?
Yeah, two and a half million, uh, uh, is in there.
All right, moving.
Well, would there be a batch to this? I mean, you haven't identified a, a grant or anything to look for. You're just saying, we'll try and look for one.
There is a F D E P grant that, um, specifically funds irrigation systems and.
Okay.
Ed could probably speak better to it.
Our, our community tried it, but they just ran out of money before they got to us.
Okay.
But ours was not a huge project, but this would be.
Was there a matching? Was there something?
Yes.
We would, oh.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's up to 50% if you get the full meal deal. But they could come back and give you 10, they could give you 30, whatever. And the 50 is the max.
And the connection, I would say the connection fees would be contemplated for that. Or at the time, we could budget, it's a smaller, um, capital cost project.
Well, the other one that to, to tie in with this would be the controller project that we're gonna be doing that, which is on my comment list. That was where we were going for it on our irrigation controller system.
Okay.
Which was almost a half a million dollars. Ours here isn't going to be a half a million dollars. Might be by five times that. Uh, but you match that with this, and now all of a sudden you have a, a lot of points for things they want to see in a project.
Okay.
Because basically it would be, uh, good use of the water, controlling the water, conserving the water, all of those, which are things that really move you up the line on getting the ability to, to get the money. Then, then it boils down to you're competing with other communities and it's just how your project rates with others. So, uh.
And where is this on our capital list?
That is on, that project that Ed is referring to, it's, it's in the bonds that we've already taken out.
Okay.
Um, and Tony doesn't want me to piggyback, so we're gonna put out a bid for landscape architectural design services for.
They don't want to.
Okay, but the tw- the twelve inch irrigation main?
That is, right now it's in permitting. We're actually getting it permitted right now, but.
So that's a 2024 project.
Yes, ma'am. It, it actually started a couple of years ago.
We need that badly. It, it supplements pressure up to the north end of our system.
So, but we're, we're going through the process for H M G P. They're reviewing everything right now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving. Uh, so the intent would be for that spray irrigation system, obviously grants would be to pursue grants. Um, but we can't do that spray irrigation system until that twelve inch irrigation main is in. So we've got a couple of years. Uh, the generator for the irrigation pumps, that, that has already been S R F funded. So that's moving on its merry way. Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six is when I think we'll get that, or twenty twenty five. Irrigation supply pump house. Um, this one is a newer project that we haven't really dealt, taken a deep dive into in the very back, um, which I will be more than happy to take you, or Bill can take you on a tour.
We've been there.
We have a small trailer back there that is the brains of our irrigation system. And it is a trailer. It is a trailer.
Small's the key word.
Breathing in there.
Yes. It is a, it's a trailer that has a limited life that we're contemplating, um, making more secure, permanent structure with approval from the county. So that, this irrigation supply pump house would start the discussion and design. Um, again, this is, this project is still on the ground.
And this is something that I, I remember Kenny like three years ago.
Yep.
He was like, you need to see this. And I'm like, what do I need to see? And I got there and I was like, oh my God.
Yeah.
Don't go, don't go in there in the middle of August.
It's.
Put some suntan lotion on if you do.
Yeah, I don't know. It was like literally forty degrees in there and it needed to be. You can't hear anything. And, and there is a need.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah. There was a need three years ago.
So with this, uh, contemplating S R F funding, because I don't know what the construction dollars would look like. So for the design purposes, again, just, we were trying more so with this exercise, trying to figure out what, if anything, that the board wanted us to pursue bonds with. Um, and honestly, once we got to the bottom of this, with the interest rates as where they're at right now.
Yeah.
I don't think it's worth it. And it, but there's, we still have that opportunity available if we need to exercise and, and fund projects, utility projects, the bonds are available. So I just kind of wanted your heads nodding. You all kind of agree with the funding sources and, um, that's how we'll continue to proceed.
I had two items that I don't know that we want to do them with bonds. They're somewhat operational, but one is our, we're, we're doing our storm sewer cleaning right now and going basin by basin. We've got a sanitary sewer system that I've basically never seen a person in a manhole. Just, it hadn't happened. We need to get those sanitary sewer lines inspected and cleaned. Uh, how, how are we gonna do that?
You know why I'm grinning?
Why?
Because Austin has been working diligently with Raph Telus over the last three months on writing an R F P.
Yeah.
A multi-year R F P to do exactly what you just said.
Well, my palm was itching, so.
That would be, that would be an operation. That would be, that would be an operational issue.
Okay, and then the other one is uh, valve testing and replacement. Uh, it scares me to death with our water system and our sanitary sewer, which is loaded with force mains, that we have valves that are out there that right now, uh, Kenny started it and I imagine they're continuing it. But we've looked at the system to make sure the key major valves at key locations hopefully work. But if we'd have a disaster around here where we've tried to take and wo- work with a premise that if we had to isolate three hundred people would be acceptable. Three thousand people is what scares me where we're at. So my, my deal is, is likewise with the sanitary sewer cleaning, valve testing and moving that program along to make sure that we don't have to isolate three thousand people, instead three hundred people, which is what our original intent was. Again, an operational issue, I think.
So again, Austin has been working on this map. We actually.
Call in Austin, would you?
So we have.
Have a talk to him.
We have a map of everything gateway that we've cordoned down by zones and that we put it on a twelve month scale for staff and we're working on getting that implemented into Cartograph, so it's in our work order system. So we've identified the areas, the locations, how many we have, how many need to be exer- it's thirteen valves a day that need to be exercised in order for us to do it.
In how long?
In a year's time.
In a year.
Yeah.
Thirteen a day and when are we, my deal of a day is two hundred and twenty working days, not three hundred and sixty-five days. So two hundred and twenty, so we got, we got a hell of a lot of valves.
We're playing catch up.
Okay.
Always.
Because the next issue after that, that is obviously the replacement.
Yes.
Some of those valves, somebody's gotta make a decision whether or not they're needed, needed to be replaced. But if you go back to the premise that we're gonna try to isolate everything to three hundred, then that's going to require a lot of valves to be replaced.
There was funding available in this fiscal year that, um, and speaking with Bill and Austin, um, it was decided that until we can get out and exercise all of these valves, that we don't want to put in new valves until, cause there might be a greater need.
At a different location.
At a different location. So staff is on top of it.
Yeah, but it comes down to when it, when this happens, it's always an emergency. And the first thing we're trying to do and the guys are trying to do is to find out, one, where's the closest valve? Well, that requires mapping. So if you have good mapping, that's step one. But if you go to it and turn it off and it doesn't work, you just go down the line till you go to the next valve and just cut off that many more people of service. So we need to have that, that thinking of what is the plan of how we're gonna do it, starting with the key valves, getting those taken care of and then dropping it down.
Copy the map.
So how long will Austin?
One more thing?
Need.
Well, it's already been answered, the irrigation control plan.
Need to finish these maps and whatever till we actually start doing these.
Staff, staff have been doing them. Um, we're just, again, we've got a lot on our plate right now and trying to get that into Cartograph and working with Leslie and um, putting together the work order system. We haven't identified, that's the big key.
Let, let's, let's, let's go back, let's go back. You said something, but we didn't take it the next step. Is somebody putting, planning on knowing that we've got ninety days before budgeting starts again? Is somebody putting together a operational cost value on each of these to talk about?
Yeah.
Are we gonna try to fund these with our utility rates, or are we gonna try to fund them some other source?
Well.
Utility rates is about the only thing we do, isn't it?
Yes.
So it's gotta come out of that.
Unless it's a bond.
Okay, we need to have some idea of what that dollar value of this, these two things are going to be, because they're gonna have a major impact on the uh.
It's, it's our intent to put out that RFP. We actually just talked about it at our Tuesday department director meeting. Um, it's our intent to put that RFP out for the sanitary sewer cleaning, um, like before budget and then get, have it on like a three or five years um, plan, and then that way we'll know what the true numbers are for the next coming years. We're, we're in the same.
Well, the, the thing that happened today, what tr- what triggered this is uh, I know we're doing the storm sewer cleaning and I'd heard that we ran into an issue where we had a large pipe in the FPL easement. And I, the only one I recall is the one that comes out of Silver Lake and goes over into the, the, the pond, it's in the flowway that becomes a part of the major flowway. And as I recall, that's a seventy-two inch pipe. I was hearing stories that that was ninety percent full of sand.
Is that?
Ninety percent. That is scary.
Exactly exercising. So I was there last week and I noticed for the first time ever and I mentioned to L. I'm like, what happened here? And it was a clear, and I didn't even know, cause I'm always there. I never even knew it was there.
Well.
So they removed like cross creek, went in, cleaned up all of that. I mean, there was just Brazilian pepper growing out of the water, like into the, it was, it was
I, I think.
Bad.
Yeah, I think this.
But it's all taking care of it now. It's the same one that I'm.
I, I, I think it may be the same, but we're all thinking about.
Yeah, I was, I was shocked. I, I wasn't surprised if they had said thirty to fifty percent, but ninety percent. Uh, that, that's serious, because then what the water is, it starts backing up, so.
All the basin cleaning paper itself by.
Yeah.
This, so.
Okay, so the money, at least we'll have an ideas to what, what, what kind of value we wanna add to our utility.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I really had for this. Again, just trying to few forward think, funding large capital projects for the utility, so.
Right, so it sounds like there isn't anything that you're thinking about that we would want to sell bonds in the next fiscal, for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
For twenty-six.
Correct.
Twenty-five. We're in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. I know.
All right, do you all have any questions about any of this?
Are we gonna be doing something similar on the public works side? Because I've got the same issues relative to, written it down, I'll bear, pull my notes back up. Pond duration, uh, and uh, what's our vision for the FPL easement? Now that we've got a clear cut up there, we've got a good open line of fire on our friends over at Pelican Preserve. They can't hide from us anymore.
That's really nice.
Do we have a plan on how we're gonna be addressing, especially the aeration side? And that's a public works issue, not a utility issue, so.
That'll be probably through the budgeting process. This was just because we had been discussing bonds and funding and.
For the aeration deal, which we know we've got FPL issues and meters and electrical and all that stuff. Where are we at on that? Haven't heard anything for a couple of months, so wanna make sure that we don't drop that, because those, those ponds critical. We need aeration in some of those ponds.
Still wrapping up, there were one or two low hanging from a year or so ago, um, and I think Daniel was working with L on the next set. Um, but I'll make sure that that gets in their monthly report. Speaking of the FPL, that was mowed. Um, we did get a price to put some, I, I believe Bahia grass, that'll be in Daniel's monthly report for you guys to review.
It looks so much better.
Looks a lot better.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we'll go ahead, uh.
I have one item, just one item. Um, it actually came up in light of your preview at the last meeting, um, it was decided by the board to um, not enter in, into any new agreements with the community, Pelican Preserve Community Association. Um, we have been working on a, it's called the P PERT agreement, which is Pelican Preserve Emergency Response Team. That agreement, um, historically was for their P PERT team to, um, in the event of an impending storm and the guardhouse people were to evacuate, their volunteer, resident volunteers, um, through this P PERT team would uh, man the guardhouse post-storm.
Person the guardhouse.
Person, the staff, thank you. Um, and that agreement expired. We've been working back and forth with the community association on trying to um, get that started back up, but I didn't know if in light of your la- your decision at the last meeting, if we wanted to cease working on that until the other issue got resolved or keep working through it.
What do you say?
I, I thought, I thought PERT fell under, um, the Resident Alliance.
Uh.
Yeah, Carol, uh, it, it was, it was a lis- additionally, uh, an initiative that was sponsored by the Residents Alliance. And uh, in, in the, in reality, I mean, this thing's not gonna really fit, affect us until next summer. So uh, it's, it's not a pressing and urgent thing, but uh, I'm open either way, word wants to go.
Yeah, the agreement is with the Pelican Preserve Community Association.
Oh, it is, okay.
Because that P PERT is under the, under PPCA.
Well, it wasn't, Tony, it just, that's a new change. That's relatively recent. It initially started as Residents Alliance.
Right, we're gonna transition to PPCA, yes. It was a three-year agreement.
Yes, the, the intent, obviously, we're outside of hurricane season right now. Hopefully, we can get the other issues resolved and get this in place prior to hurricane season, but I didn't wanna keep expending district, you know, to- attorney's times, both on their side and ours, if we were gonna put a stop to this, at least until that other issue got resolved.
Well, maybe not a stop, but a pause.
A pause, thank you. If that's, again, I'm, I'm looking for direction, um, from, from the board.
Pause?
To pause or not.
Okay, pa- I, I, it'll be pause?
That'll care.
Yeah, pause.
Pause, okay.
Pause it is.
On that note, ju- just because we mentioned Pelican, have we received the documents that we requested?
No.
Cause I saw some back and forth conversation, but.
We have not received any additional documents.
The, the last thing we had was a letter, I think dated January twenty-third, or emails also saying we received all the documents.
But we didn't.
Well, we received everything that, that had, I'm, I'm paraphrasing.
Okay.
Let me find the exact language.
Everything we, we have and it's not what you need.
Correct. What you see is what you get.
Yeah, I, I'll get the exact language in a second here if you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's all, that's all I have.
So since, since we brought that up, how are things going?
They're not going.
Um, we have a scheduled meeting, uh, on February twelfth in person with their, the community association, their council, their auditors, um, and all, same, same matching on our team. Um, and hopefully we can resolve it that day.
And you and Laura are our representatives at that meeting, correct?
Tony and au- auditor don't want to be hired, okay.
Unless the board.
No, that's fine.
Nope.
Yeah, and, and, and in response, on January twenty-ninth, I have received an email from Mr. Damsick. Uh, that the association does not have any records made, but, okay, we asked about all public records. It says the association does not fully understand what is meant in the sections requiring delivery of all public records. The association does not have any records made by the GSCD, which are GSCD's property, required to be kept by GSCD. Uh, that begs the question, because the records they were maintaining are, on behalf of the district, are public records. And so, but I'll respond to Mr. Damsick. Then it said the association had previously delivered all related bank statements, supporting documents, reimbursement requests, vendor invoices and proof of performance. The association did not redeliver these documents, if that is what you were asking. My question was, uh, his, his email was on January twenty-fourth, the association noted to me that all available documents have been provided. And so I wrote, basically wrote back on that, um, as, as to what all those available documents were, and that's my response.
Fifteenth, since your meeting is just a few days prior. All right, so you don't have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, District Attorney, you have anything?
Uh, just a, a few items, yes. Uh, we have one more check to receive. The other checks were received on January twenty-second or twenty-third.
Okay.
So we're waiting one more.
Oh, on that.
The settlement, yes.
Oh, settlement, okay.
So, um, knocking wood, hopefully, we were told by council, we're in for market, the check.
Should they ask if they bounced?
No, they're not bounced, that's the good news. I, I asked our, our assistant that handles that matter today. We have no messages from the bank that they've not cleared. Okay.
I think.
So that's, since it's right, uh, with regards to the Attorney General's opinion, I met with Katie Burkey last Friday, had a good meeting with her to go over her suggestions to the request, and the goal is to bring that request as uh, in a coordinated fashion from us and Katie and Stony Brook to the February fifteenth meeting.
This, this is a, Stoney Brook.
The revised, revised updated. Yeah, we sort of honed in on what we think might be areas to a- address the lack of clarity or understanding on the part of the Attorney General.
So I have come for you for the fifteen?
Yes. Yes.
All of it, okay.
Yes, on that end of.
It's due next Thursday.
I'm sorry?
It's due next Thursday.
I know.
Good.
Uh, Atlantic Southern Paving, I have, trying to set up another call, we've been playing telephone table with Rena, the attorney for Atlantic, she's been very pleasant, but that's not been resolved. Uh, February fifteenth, we noticed a facilities plan is advertised for that date.
Yeah, good point. When are we gonna see the facility plan? Is it gonna be in the board book?
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
Thursday.
Actually, actually before that time.
Glimpse of it today.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it ahead of time.
They told me I'd have a copy of it tomorrow for staff review and it will be in the board book for Thursday.
Cause it was advertised yesterday of the hearing for the fifteen.
I saw the paper.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and by the way.
I'm sorry, what's on the fifteenth?
Oh, that's right, it's me, never mind.
Having a public hearing that we had advertised for to adopt, hopefully the board adopt the facilities plan for the meter project.
You have to have a public hearing first, though.
Uh, FPL easement, uh, I sent, we received comments from FPL. I sent an email back asking for a call, agreed to some of them at the staff level and asked them for clarification on others. And I just resent that, well.
Literally been working on this consent agreement since I started with the district since May of twenty twenty-two.
You have your best friend now.
Yeah, Penny is my best.
Is it?
It's Penny.
Penny.
Your, your hair hat got gray enough yet.
I dye it.
So it's, it's not, it's not done yet.
Just, just letting you know, it's been fun.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, yes, well, I, I worked with Chelsea and bring to the board at the next meeting a resolution with regards to placing notices in the paper about the upcoming qualifying period for the supervisor, or like, I mean, the supervisor seats that come open this fall. Or actually qualifying periods in June. So we have to put a notice in the paper and just, I'll get with Chelsea on putting that in the next agenda packet.
Quite question for Tony, going back to previous discussion, it started at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, cause I don't see your invoices, but are your invoices definitive enough that there's no question about that?
I will be more than happy to send those to you.
If my, my thing on that, and I did want to extend that uh, back and forth, but why should I pay for that? My community?
What were we talking about?
If, if there was something, if it were, uh, Daniel's preserve, I would expect Dan's preserve to pay if we got a legal issue there. Gateway Greens, if that was an issue over there, I, I, I would expect us to pay for it. I don't, I guess I didn't understand that, other than the fact that there could be confusion over what the invoice was for, but you're saying that didn't happen.
No, it's very clear.
And that's what I think the problem was. Anything else out of the O one goes everywhere else, because they're different, it's O four, and those, I couldn't give that answer and I couldn't respond, and that's why I reached out to Chelsea, because I didn't have visibility to invoices, but when she told me what the invoices were, they're one hundred percent O four, because they're literally only
Okay.
Talking about the.
And I believe that they've had a turnover with who their treasurer is, and I think there's a misunderstanding of what falls under the O and M and then what falls under district. Um, and so, uh, again, respond, in my draft response to that gentleman, I'm hoping to clarify that.
Yeah, and what I do, in, in the billing system, that for the district, from my billing perspective, I have a base number that's for general district man.
Like job numbers, tasks.
Yeah, then when they have for water and sewer, I have a separate billing, uh, and for roads, parks and recreation, water management, I have different numbers for that.
And, and I review them very thoroughly.
Yeah, yeah, so I get comments.
Yeah.
Necessary. I try not.
And Ed, when we have special purchase, purpose projects, uh, P PAC has traditionally uh, listed an amount of money, budgeted money specifically for the project. So then we do task authorizations within Pelican, when we need Tony's services.
And what I'll do also, for the fifteenth also, I forgot to mention, and Chelsea reminded me yesterday, has come back with a uh, memo to the board with a possible plan and a budget for the roads in the defunct association, as to how, if the board wants to proceed.
To me, it's cost doing business, it's, that's it.
I'd just like a follow-up on the last meeting, for instance, this did reach out to us at Dennis Preserve about that part, you know, thinking over that, so just a follow-up on that too. Okay, anything?
Okay, can I, give me a call, I'll talk to you about that, okay.
It's my phone.
Not me. Um, anything else, Tony?
No, sir, no, ma'am. I was looking at it, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I've got bees on my brain, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Um, it's your board business, it's gender management. Anything else that you had, you wanna go on by one of, um, do you guys have any questions or anything to add? I don't have any.
Only the things that we talked about earlier, uh, incorporating those into this, that's the only thing I have.
And I'll tell you, um, I know it's not on here, cause I didn't add it to the sheet, but starting with the March seventh meeting, from March through May, there's gonna be, um, discussions regarding like things that you would like to incorporate into the budget, and then by May, I'll actually have some numbers that I can present, we can start talking.
And we're gonna essentially do the same way we did it last year, going through that same process.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think that's very clear.
The big, the big picture, big dollar stuff, you know, the initiatives in, starting in March, and then the actual dollars will come later.
So as of right now, I don't have anything scheduled for the Mark, Mar- March workshop unless, uh, you tell me otherwise, otherwise we can put in, um, like the budget initiative.
Some of this stuff, we could really start knocking off early, instead of having to get down to the last minute and crunching this thing. Get, 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 get the common sense stuff out of the way.
Okay, so.
Well, and particularly if the staff can put together uh a prospective capital budget. Where we could go through the capital items early on.
We did a we did a lot of legwork last year, so hopefully this will be a a little bit easier, but we can start with the March workshop as budget initiatives, big picture. Um, and then as we get closer, if there are specific items that you want us to uh get estimates or prices on, so that way we have better but better budgeting numbers. Um, we can work, we have a little bit of time to work through that.
Well, the other issue is we have the election this year too, and uh that's going to be running uh side by side with this through August, and I'm sure that that somebody that's going to be running needs to understand just what you're getting into. Uh, so uh.
We'll do that.
Look, if we get started on this, better off we're going to be.
Yeah, and Chelsea and Lori, always do that wonderful schedule.
Yes.
What we're going to be.
Well, I have it, yeah. The budget schedule, it's actually done. I think I I'll make sure it's in the next one. It's done. I actually, I already I printed it to PDF and everything. I think it'll be in my monthly report. Yeah.
And I'll be back uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be in the monthly report.
Thank you.
Alright, so nothing else for agenda management. Uh supervisors and comments, I'll start with Ed.
I got several, but they'll go fast. Uh, manhole cover raising, I brought it up to you, but I think it's something that we need to maybe have somebody with eyes on the ground when the guys are doing the work that would catch.
Storm big storm stormwater, storm.
Storm storm, storm sewer. Yeah, the issue here is I've got a seven hundred fifty eight hundred thousand dollar house with a storm sewer inlet, which it is where it is. Not not much you could do about that. Trouble was it's been buried for thirty years. It's now exposed as a part of the cleaning, and it's setting about that far underground with four flags on it and a manhole cover in the front of a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house. The owner's been very nice, uh, but if it had been me, I'd be a little ticked. It needs to be raised to get that taken care of, and I'm my deal is not just that one, but are there any others that we've had to excavate? We need to get those fixed. Uh, next item is uh, we talked about it earlier, but we didn't talk about this specific. I think we really need to concentrate quickly on putting together a letter with a couple of exhibits to send to our three hundred pilot privileged people uh showing them, cause I can tell you right now these people are going to be in shock when they see what we're going to be doing in some of these yards where the existing pits are not simply going to be replaced because there's too many things. So a letter getting out to those people, letting them know ahead of time, was what I'm afraid is going to happen is a lot of these are going to be seasonal, and their neighbor is going to call them in June, July, August, or September. You know what the hell they're doing to your yard? You won't get the call. I'll get it. Uh, so I think we need to. I think we what?
I get your call.
So Ed, what is?
You get the good ones.
When are you thinking that this letter needs to go out?
I'd say as quick as we can.
I have a different opinion um until I agree a letter needs to go out.
A letter. So just something to let them know it's coming.
It needs to be mailed, posted, and emailed. Um, but I I don't want to get too far ahead. We've we're trying to jump through all these hoops and loops with SRF.
Just something to let them know. Okay.
So I'm sorry, Ed, it sounds like you're talking you want this done by the end of the month. Chelsea, it sounds like you're talking March, April.
You want a general letter. It's coming.
Yeah, I want a general letter.
A general letter that just says it's coming.
And it may be, it may be because of what we had the earlier discussion on what Leslie was talking about. It might not be a bad idea to start bringing up that issue of the meter pits to begin with, then hit kill two birds with one stone. But the big one is these people are going to be for all practical purposes, especially in my community where we have all the troubles. They're going to be guinea pigs. To see how this works and how it's going to be done. It's not going to be simple. But anyway, uh, the sooner the better, in my opinion. Uh, next one, uh, we're having other storm sewer cleaning damages issues. For example, sod being torn up and stuff like that, and I think what's happening is uh Extreme through Scott is going to be coming in and doing some checkup, so those will get taken care of.
If if those come up, please let us know, um, because we're we've got a a list of those with um extreme divers and um, we follow up and make sure that things get repaired.
Okay, the next one, I've got owner or a couple of owners in the Villas calling. They're very pleased, uh, most of them. Uh, relative to the uh putting in the stone around the lake, everything looks real good, except for one thing. They want that orange fence gone. Uh, what do we need to do to get that fence? Uh, in the Villas, the little lake along the golf course on Championship Drive.
The fence that we always have.
The orange fence.
Around one.
On the LME, so the on the LME, they stake it, and after they stake it, they put the fence.
The project's been over with for a couple of week, well, month, and the the orange fence is still there. They need to get rid of that.
Well.
There's no work to be done, to my knowledge.
Well, it part of the fence staying up was so the sod could get established, and I believe we were trying to um do final punch list with them, but I will send a note to Matt Tower to that was what pond?
Thanks, once it's not one seventeen, it's the one when you go into Gateway on Championship Drive.
Okay.
The Villas is on the right. It's the little pond between Championship Drive and the Villas.
I got a substantial completion, but we're not through the final punch list yet.
Okay, well, they're asking, they think it's done.
Okay.
Uh, I and if it's if it's a uh 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 grow in issue, then we I can explain that to them, but I didn't know what it was. I think all of us got the letter on the pool cleaning, pool issue. Uh, happens to be one of my owners. I don't like the idea. I certainly wouldn't like it, but is there a way that instead of having staff cleaning urinals, cleaning pools, that's not their job. That's not their background. Why don't we just get a professional cleaning company to do it right? And then have somebody to be responsible that if we got uh drains plugged or we got mold or what whatever the issue is that she pointed out in that letter, can we have a professional company come in once, twice, whatever you feel necessary? Let's get that pool cleaned where the issues that she's pointing out, those those shouldn't happen. And I don't know if it's somebody that doesn't want to do, uh, you know, having a staff person like in my gate houses. The 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 last person of the day is to clean the the gatehouse, and I'm talking about twelve foot square. They can't even handle that because they don't do professionally. The fan, I that fan looks like it needs to go to some museum. It's got stuff growing on it. They don't clean it, and that's my question. Is this, is that the job of staff or is that the job of professional cleaning?
That is the job of staff that has been explained to them in their job description. I don't want to come up with excuses. We had items that we missed. Staff have since been sat down, spoke to, addressed, re taught, learned. Carrie is down there. Um, we had a transition period with Tim leaving and um Carrie starting and getting up to speed with everything pool. Um, since then, all of those issues have been rectified. I will tell you my experience with having cleaning companies take this building, for instance. They miss stuff all the time. It's a lot easier to reprimand staff than it is to tell a company, hey, next week when you come back, you missed this. Um, I I think the quality of service, although we had a hiccup this time, um, you haven't heard a complaint and I I haven't that this is the first complaint I've had since I've started working here, so my preference would be to keep it with staff, but um, if that's a service that you all want us to contract out next year, um, we can definitely get some pricing and consider that.
Well, if we get any more letters like that, because that that's that's embarrassing. I don't know to who all that letter went to.
Just you all and.
No, I mean, I mean, I don't know who she BCC'd when she sent it to us. Uh, I I haven't heard anything back from anybody else. But the issue was, it was uh uh pretty uh pretty ugly. Uh, that's all I had.
Carol?
Uh, yeah, uh, we got an email um where you supplied us with a copy of the response from Lee County uh upon our request for a town hall meeting concerning the recycling facility.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and it sounds like they would be happy to participate, but it sounds like they want to wait until after June when there's a uh some kind of a semblance of a building being proposed and exactly where we go.
I don't think they have plans.
Are they stalling us, I guess?
So I went back and read the, and I think I made a may have mentioned this at a past meeting, but I went back and read the actual resolution, the actual um motion that was approved, and it was it was for a purchase. And pending, you know, due diligence of the property, so it's it's very clear their intent to close on that property. Um, it's my understanding, I think they're in phase one of due diligence, and I think that time span may be after closing. Um, and then where they're developing design, they did approach us um asking where the closest water mains were. So.
Okay.
Uh, we can. My impression I received after the initial um town hall we had with some of the residents and um solid waste was uh this was urgent. They wanted to have this public meeting prior to the next steps of the due diligence.
Okay.
At least that's the impression I received from the audience. Um, it seems though by this email that.
It's quite contrived.
It's quite contrived.
And I I would agree. It's opposite.
The opposite.
Cause I was here when Chelsea was here, and I'll have to agree that it's it's black and white. They said one thing and the email and the letter back to us totally different.
Yeah, I don't I can't understand going and doing a purchase if what they said in that letter that they hadn't got what I would call preliminary plans of what the hell they're even going to do there. How do you buy something and then do the design or have the design after the fact? U- usually you have the the plan or a layout or a concept of what you're going to be building before you buy the land. That'd been like us buying that uh two lots down here and then asking where we were going to put the ballpark or where we're going to put the anything, and we'd already bought it. That doesn't make any sense.
And and I think to help answer that, and it was answered by Lee County staff when they came here during that town hall was they purchased fifty acres for a reason. More, they purchased more than they they needed. Not only to provide a buffer, but I think to accommodate their need.
We're I don't I don't think we're being told everything they know.
So uh.
Okay, so my question is, do we want to try and pursue a meeting?
Prior to?
Prior to, I mean, in the month of March or April.
I'm looking for direction from you all. If you if you would like for me to respond to the Assistant County Manager and make that request, um, we can work on trying to find a larger room to accommodate a larger crowd. Um, I think um we can probably find one of the churches since I don't know that there's going to be enough room at the Community Associate over in Pelican.
Well, I think.
Well, but.
There's a difficulty with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had some concerns with hosting it over there too, so.
Okay, and I understand their situation, but we also have the club there too, and they have a very large room there too.
We can work on finding an alternative location.
So.
That's the direction.
And seeing as how the club is going to butt right up to this property, it seems like that would be almost a natural place to hold it. And I think their facility in the Osprey Room is actually bigger than the Magnette Room. Or they're about the same.
They got a stake in this office.
So would you like us to request?
Sooner, yes.
I think I'd push it to the next next step and see if you can't get a interim meeting.
Sooner rather than later.
I think people start asking questions, and they're going to say, well, we 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 can't answer that. We don't know what. How in the hell do you go buy it?
And out of sight, out of mind is not what we want. We want a lot of visibility and conversation.
You buy it because it's already zoned. And all you.
The other, the other.
Your environmental stuff is already done. It's already zoned. That's why.
The other issue is why are we looking, why are they looking at hauling stuff into this community when the preponderance of growth in this community is south? Why aren't we doing it, they doing it south? Find some place down there.
Space down there that has the zoning and the environmental done and everything else that they would have to do.
And my biggest thing was when he.
You're you're pushing the decision a good three to four years down the road if you take a parcel that's south of.
It's a squeaker wheel down south too.
Well, I I can't speak for any wheels in the southern.
I I think it needs to be, it needs to be done too.
Could could you respond back, Chelsea, and ask if we can't have this in the first part of March is what I would.
Is everybody good with that?
Uh, don't forget Bob and Doug are online.
Yes. And um.
Maybe at the grand opening of the roundabout.
Just come on over.
Alright, so Bob, you have any comments?
Uh, I just got a couple. Do we have a tentative groundbreaking for our admin building yet? Anybody got?
The one time. The one time Carol doesn't ask it, Bob does.
Well, last time you told us March ish.
I I would, I'm still shooting for March. It might be the end of March, but I'm still shooting for March.
Okay, uh, the second thing, uh, as a result of the great meeting that took place with Chelsea and the and the uh the rest of the staff over at Pelican, uh, it spurred me to identify some other communication improvement opportunities between staff and the residents. So just for the board in general to know that we are pursuing some of those. As a matter of fact, I think Nancy Straw has already uh answered kind of favorably about wanting to consider some of those things. Uh, last but not least, the never ending landscape project, we are down to one remaining resident uh to sign off. I have had a meeting with uh Amerisgate for them to confirm to me, looking at the map, that they are in fact doing uh what is on the map as their responsibility. So that's happening, and I held a meeting with uh PPCA and showed them where we are because they they hold the last key to this. Uh, we're now at the point where we need to meet with the PPCA and Tony and uh GIS, and we all agree on what items we want the PPCA to grant us easements for, and then that thing will be finally and completely done. So good progress. I'm hoping to have it wrapped up in the next thirty days.
Alright, thank you, Bob. Doug?
Yeah, I don't have anything. Thanks.
And I um I forgot to mention one thing. I received a shocking email this week, and um it was a good shock, and I'm glad I was. I I'm glad I was sitting down. So all of the meetings that we had um that the board requested staff have with the sheriff and the the various schools and Lee County DOT regarding the staging or staggering of parent pickup and parking on Griffin and other places. Um, we received a design from Johnson Engineering that the school district hired for this elementary school to consider permanent construction uh improvements to help alleviate the issues on Griffin with their parent pickup. So uh we're going to be meeting with them uh here in the coming weeks, but I just wanted to emphasize that, you know.
You're talking about this little school here.
Yes, he was, he was to.
I know, I know, but but we take our wins where we can, so the.
Small step, right? It's only.
They they.
Seven years.
It's the same school district, so hopefully now they can say, hey, now go address the north side, but um, what came of all of those meetings and that time that we spent um was something positive, and hopefully uh the school district can uh come up with some long term solutions, at least for the elementary school. We're hoping for the high school as well.
I I have a comment from uh Randy's just said to remind that the landscape bids are due February fifteenth, and they had five bidders at the mandatory prebid yesterday. For the for the for them, our ours, our landscape contract.
Is it? That's all I have.
That's it. I don't have anything.
By the way, if the board wants me to, I can send it to Chelsea. She can distribute the agenda item back in August when the county commissioner approved buying that property. It's got the contract and appraisal summary and all kinds of stuff.
Go ahead, send it on.
Yep.
Four oh eight. Alright, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Doug.
Hi.
Hi.